...to moderate our town hall meeting this evening. So it's really nice to see so many people come out and we're really interested to see how it will go, so we're looking forward to it. If everyone would join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to start by introducing Matt Ork Companies. And you can't hear closer? Better? Well, I'm not sure it's in my control. Okay, so there we go. Matt Ork and Ralph DeAngelis are here to give a presentation for us this afternoon. So do you want to come up here or do you want to?
Good evening and thank you for all being here. I'm sure everybody had better things to do tonight than be at town hall, but we very much appreciate you coming out and allowing us to speak with you. As you know, we have been retained by the Ocean Pines administration to take over the food and beverage operations for the yacht club and the beach club. I'd just like to introduce the Matt Ork Companies team that is here tonight. You'll get to see these guys a lot. They are the majority of the team that will be at the yacht club. We have Stuart Diopold, who's a partner in the Matt Ork Companies and our executive chef. Just to tell you a little bit about Stu, he's cooked at places like The Shark, The Galaxy, and Rare and Rye, and he's a phenomenal chef and I think you are all going to love him. Next to him is Joel Blyce. Joel will be the executive chef of the yacht club. One quick interesting thing about Joel, he was Stu's teacher in culinary school way back when.
I'm hungry.
Next we have Louis. Louis is the general manager of the yacht club for Ocean Pines. Next is Tommy. Tommy's the assistant general manager of the yacht club of Ocean Pines. At Matt Ork Companies, we're a team. We can't do it by ourselves. We're all lifers in this business. It's all we've ever done. I came here when I was 13 years of age, went to high school here, went to Salisbury University. I am invested in this community, in this town and where we live. We want to succeed more than you probably want us to. I'm not the talker of the group. I'm going to tell you that right now. Soon, my partner Ralph DeAngelis will come up here and he'll give you the State of the Union, so to speak, and our plan on how we intend to accomplish our goals. We look for a win-win situation, a win for the Ocean Pines community, a win for each and every individual business, and a win for Matt Ork Companies, and we think that's There's many reasons why we will succeed at what we're going to do, but I'm going to tell you the most important reason, the number one reason. If you don't remember anything from this tonight, I want you to remember this. My mother lives in Ocean Pines and I'll never hear the end of it if I don't succeed. I'm not going to give her address out. We are vested in this community, we are vested in this project, and we will succeed. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ralph DeAngelis. Thank you.
You all might laugh, but he's not kidding. His mother's a handful. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to have a meeting with you and talk to you like we have at our corporate meetings. We call it open and honest communication.
It's being broadcast.
All right, is that better? So open and honest communication is what we insist upon on our corporate meetings and that's what you're going to get. You're going to get, as Matt said, the State of the Union as it stands right now with the food and beverage divisions and the yacht club and the beach club and Ocean Pines. I'm going to give you the good and the bad. You're going to like hearing some things, you're not going to like hearing other things, but you deserve to hear all of it. We need to be transparent with everything that's going on so that there's no ambiguity going down the road. Here's the good news. The good news is there's a lot more good news than there is bad. The bad news is that some of the bad things are bad, but we can get through them, okay? Now, in no specific order, I'm going to go over seven topics, and I'm just going to throw them out one at a time and then you can guys, during the question and answer, you can revert back to them and we can go into them. So let me start and get some of the bad things out of the way. Your inventory that is presently at the yacht club and the beach club is completely inflated. It's massive. You have a liquor inventory, for example, at the beach club that consists of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of bottles of liquor that you'll probably never use. The reason for that is, and by the way, I want to make it clear out of the gate, I'm not here to bash previous management. I'm here to tell you the way things are, okay? When ordering was done, I can only assume that the management at the time didn't want to do the ordering, so they told the salesperson, "Tell me what I need and just send it in." At the end of the season, that salesperson decided he was going to make his quota on Ocean Pines' dime, and I'm going to give you an example so that you understand where I'm coming from. You're sitting on 10 cases of Calypso rum. Now, when someone orders a rum, I'm going to get a little detailed here, chances are it's probably Captain Morgan's Rum or Bacardi Rum. Nobody orders Calypso rum and whatever. Now, we have 10 cases of Calypso rum. All right, well Ralph, well what's the problem with that? Sell our Calypso rum in one of your regular rum and Coke drinks. No problem. That's what we'll do to get rid of that inventory. But now let me explain to you how that's a problem. I can buy Bowman's Rum for a regular rum and Coke drink, which I can sell to everybody here as a rail drink very inexpensively for $4.95 a bottle, but now I'm saddled with 10 cases of Calypso rum at $13 a bottle. Okay, so you see where I'm coming from? I gave you one example, Calypso rum. Don't get me started with the bottles and bottles of EJ Brandy sitting at the yacht club or the cases of Chevis Regal. Now, I like Scotch as much as the next guy, but you're going to be sitting on those bottles of Chevis Regal till 2035. And I can offer up a discount for the stuff that's left over so that you're not sitting on it till 2035, but what does that do? That raises my percentage costs, and I want to try to talk in layman's terms. If I was to sell, let's go back to the rum, my rum and Coke for $5 of Bowman's Rum, I'm selling it at a 19% cost of sale, which means it costs me 19 cents for every dollar I bring in. But if I have to sell a $13 bottle of rum instead of my Bowman's, now my cost of sales has gone to 31 cents a drink. So you're saying, "Well Ralph, that's 13 cents a drink. What's the issue here?" That's 13 cents a drink times 12 bottles a case times 10 cases. You guys can do the math. That's just with rum, okay? The State of the Union with inventory. I wanted to explain to you what that meant and then tell you where we are. Some distributors are going to take it back and give me not cash back for it, which will go back to the coffers, but give me an exchange, and that's only because, because they normally don't do that, but we are, because we run so many operations, we're more of a hammer than a nail, and we have the weights to say to that liquor distributor, "Hey, listen, you have to do this for us because we have all these other properties here and if you don't do this for us, then, you know, I'm not sure how much of this stuff we're going to order from you down the road at any of these other properties." So it's kind of strong arm it, but they'll comply and that's going to help us out here at the beach club and the yacht club. That's a massive help that I'm going to get out of them due to our weight here. There's a couple other ways we can get rid of that inventory. Unfortunately, some of the ways are going to have to be just selling it, in the ways that I told you. We're going to have to sell it, it's going to affect our cost of sales, but when it runs out, I can assure you, we'll go back to buying the way it should be bought. And by the way, there's nothing wrong with buying QDs. A QD is a quantity discount, and I'll give you an example of that. Diageo is the biggest liquor distributor in the United States. They'll offer a QD, a quantity discount, on let's say their Smirnoff products, and they'll say, "It's a family buy." And what that means is Smirnoff, Smirnoff Orange for your orange crushes, Smirnoff Grapefruit, Smirnoff Grape, Smirnoff Cherry for your bombs. You can buy a 10 cases of Smirnoff, any quantity of any amount you want, and it will give you a discount of $2 a bottle. Now, that's a great QD because we get to pick what we want and then we use those drinks in our specials. Really use it is why it's a great quantity discount. So buying QDs is good, but what they did there wasn't. I think they just basically offered sales and tell them what to buy. So that's the problem with inventory. That's how it can be solved, that's how, part of it can't be solved, but we'll figure it out. That's what we're being paid to do. Let me go to, next to the menu, because I know that's been a lot of issues going on about the menu. The menu's not finished yet, but let me just say this right out of the gate, our menu at the yacht club is not a Rare and Rye menu, okay? Just to get that out there, because we don't want Rare and Rye here, it's too expensive. Here's how it is a Rare and Rye menu. The quality of the food is going to be just as spectacular as Rare and Rye, that's a promise. Here's how it is like Rare and Rye. The service at the yacht club is just going to be like Rare and Rye, that's a promise. The cost of the food will not be like Rare and Rye, that's a promise. Okay, so I want to get that out right now and I want everyone to understand, we know who we're dealing with, we know what our demographic is, we know Ocean Pines has a large demographic, but we know that they consider this property, in particular the yacht club, home, and at home you don't want to get railed. You want to feel at home the way you feel at home and that we're going to treat you that way. Listen, we have to be able to pay the bills and we have to be able to make a slight profit, but it's going to be pretty great service at a good point, okay? Now menus aren't subjective, they are. 20% of the people in this room are not going to like our menu. I don't know who you are, but if I tried to switch it so that you 20% would like it, there'd be another 20% over here that don't love our menu. It's just the way it is. Here's what I ask. I ask that when you read it, if you see it and you think, "Hey, nothing here really suits my boat," you know what? Come in, give us one shot. I'm talking to the 20%. The rest of you are going to love it. But come in, give us a shot. If it didn't fit your boat, I get it, but give us a shot to see if we can blow you straight up on our menu. It's going to be different at the yacht club than the beach club, obviously, but we're going to use a lot of the same components. And then why is that important? Because a chicken breast that we can use at the beach club and a chicken breast that we can use at the yacht club, we can buy more chicken breasts of that size and style. Well, why is that important now? Because the more we buy, the cheaper they become. Okay, so we're going to have buying power. Additionally, we're going to pair our menu with components, pair with our other properties. If we're on Rye, you buy chicken, and if you're on Smirnoff, you get chicken. Now the price comes down even less. So the components will be the same and that's how we plan on... Sorry. That's how we plan on saving money that way, okay? Our buying power is strong. We are going to have happy hours at both locations. My first applause of the night, figures it's happy hour. Yep, I'm off to a good start. We are going to have happy hour at both locations. At the yacht club, I can tell you it's going to be from 3 to 6. Now, let me explain to you why it ends at 6, because I'm going to jump into the next category, which is entertainment. Happy hour at the yacht club will stop at 6 because the bands begin at 6, Friday and Saturday night. Only Friday and Saturday night we're going to have bands, they're going to be outside, they're going to be great bands, you're going to love them, they are different bands, and the bands from 6 to 10, the price has to go up with the drinks, not above normal, normal price, but not happy, our price, to pay for the band. We don't want to lose money on this endeavor. You're going to have a great time outside with the bands and the drink prices will accommodate that. The bands will end at 10. Now, on the other nights of the week, we have other entertainment and promotion schedules. I have been told, if I've been told once, I've been told 1,001 times, bring back trivia That has not fallen upon deaf ears. I hear you loud and clear, and I guarantee you, and Matt's mother, we will have trivia night again at the yacht club. I don't know what date that's been scheduled for, but we will have it.
Tell mom you love her.
I will.
She'll probably watch.
I love you. The beach club entertainment is not bands. The beach club will have entertainment, for example, on Saturday afternoons, it'll be a DJ that plays sing-along wedding kind of music, the kind that you'd sing to and dance to at a wedding reception, happy, fun, going music from 2 to 6. It's going to be a great entertainment schedule. Let me move on to construction, okay? Construction. Now, for this I'm going to have to read because I want to make sure I get it all right. The yacht club construction we've done so far is basically just changing the flow pattern of the restaurant. The front entrance to the restaurant will no longer be where you would come in if you were going to a banquet upstairs. It's now going to be around the side of the building, which works perfectly. When you come in, we've moved a wall back about four feet and a hostess desk will be there to see you when you come in. We have three six-foot movable walls that go from where the hostess is to the right, which leads directly to the bar. So if you want to go right to the bar, you walk in, she says it's right there, you walk straight through, and no one in the dining room gets hindered. No one sees you walking in and you don't bother into the tables. If you want a table, she says, "How many party?" And she walks in and seats you into the dining room, which by the way, has got some beautiful additions to it that I think you're going to find spectacular. So the flow of the restaurant has become better. The entrance has moved to the side. We have upgraded the tables and chairs. The tables and chairs, we got a great deal, by the way, because of our buying power, because of the buying power that we had when we built Rare and Rye from scratch, Wagner came in, who did a giant deal for us at Rare and Rye, and they gave us a fantastic deal on tables and chairs that you're going to really, really like. We brought our interior designer, Toby Jacobson, who found the right material for him, they're having it put on. Wagner did it at no cost to us, and the color schemes are great. The walls have been changed with nice color painting, and on some walls, there's wallpaper that you're going to find unbelievably appealing. Lighting has been added, so it's not just high hats. You know what high hats are? The things that are flushed to the thing? Now we actually have some lighting that comes down and it gives the room ambiance and lighting. Nice, a nice ambiance. You're going to feel as if you're in a beautiful restaurant and not a cafeteria. Okay, so happy hours in cafeterias are my go-to point. The board approved those, we were able to get those done at a fraction of a price of what they would normally cost. Now, the beach club, there were no funds available for upgrades that were anything other than necessary, but there were some necessary upgrades. There were some code violations, for example, with the sprinkler system. The sprinkler system needed to be redone at the beach club. That's something that can't be decided, do we want to do it or do we not want to do it? That had to be done because it was leaking, it was 40 years old and rusting, and water was coming out, and if it can't hold pressure, then it won't pass a fire test. If it can't pass a fire test, we won't get a fire inspector, which means we can't get our liquor license. So the sprinkler system was what I'm... The bar top, for example, at the beach club had been, over years, I guess, warned and was now porous. If it's porous, the health inspector comes in and says, "Bacteria can set inside the porous and we won't pass you." Rather than bringing someone in to sand them and restain them and polyurethane them and put it back on, it was cheaper to actually have the whole thing lifted up, thrown out, have a guy who does this for a living, who actually built the bar at Rare and Rye, and again, buying power because we did this already with them, he gave us a really good deal, built it in his warehouse, bring it in, set it down, polyurethane it, finish it, and put it back on. So now it's new at a super decent price. The decking. The decking had it been surfaced in eons and it needed to be nailed down in some areas and sanded and refinished, and we found it more inexpensive and actually probably better to have it poured with a sealant that'll be brushed on. It's a two-coating process, and now you can walk on the decking and the railings without, you know, your children getting splinters. I don't know how else to word it other than getting splinters. So this is, that's stuff that had to be done. The hot water heater had corroded. That's not a luxury item for us, it had corroded. It didn't work. So those are the things that are happening with the constructions of both properties in this State of the Union address. I'm almost done. Our timeline. Let me let them know what our timeline is. The timeline for the yacht club is we intend on having our soft opening on Monday, May 14th. Now, let me explain what a soft opening is. A soft opening is when you do, soft opening is what we tell what you all it's called. To us, it's actually a kitchen stress test. Every five minutes in a one hour and 20 minute period, we bring in a party of two, a party of three, and a party of four, which have been predetermined to come in at those five-minute intervals and told, "You can order X number of appetizers and X number of entrees." They come in, the next five minutes, we do again, two, three, and four, the next five minutes, two, three, and four, until we finally find what point in time the kitchen breaks. It's a kitchen stress test. All those people that have come in and eaten at that, those aren't paying customers, we will invite people to come in. You normally, friends and family, because we tell them, "You're going to have a horrible experience. Your steak's going to be undercooked, your server's going to trip and fall, and the sow's going to go on you and all..." But you don't have to pay for your food. If you want something to drink, you have to pay for it. But at the end, we give them a questionnaire, and all they have to do is fill out the questionnaire and tell us everything went wrong so that we can correct that during the next three days before we open to you all, which would be on Thursday, May 17th. That's called a hard opening, okay? Now, that's the timeline as it stands right now, and I can tell you that the Public Works Department, and Kevin Leifeld in particular, is fantastic. He's great, and they're getting their work done, they're fast and furious to make sure we get this done. The only caveat to this is our point-of-sale system, POS is our register system, we're working on it. PAT in IT is working on it, we have the makers of the register working on it, but listen, the whole place could be beautiful, the food could be good, we passed our stresses. We don't have registers, we can't open, but we're working on it, and I'm not trying to scare anybody, this is an open and honest communication, I'm letting you know the only caveat to the deal. The beach club. Our soft opening, or our stress test, is set for Thursday, May 17th. The good news is that I have a party booked for that day with college graduates from Lehigh University who don't know they're being used as a stress test. What I did to incentivize them is I gave them a discount off of all their food, and I didn't specify what they could order. I said, "You get 25% off of anything you want to order," which ensured me that they would order something of everything, and the kitchen would get stressed just on making all of it. And then we gave them a discount on their drinks, so they're as happy as could be. And then at the end, we're going to figure out what we did wrong. Then we're closed, we're going to fix it all, finish up the things we need to do, and then open up our hard opening to the public on Friday, May 25th, which is Memorial Day Friday, okay?
Can we get rid of some of that rum?
Oh, we're going to get rid of some of that rum if they won't take it back. Lastly, and this is probably going to be the hardest thing for you guys to hear, but remember, this is open and honest communication, okay? And you deserve to know the truth. We have inherited a damaged brand. The yacht club is a damaged brand. At one point in time, it was spectacular, and you all loved it, and everything was great, and it has since decayed into a damaged brand. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is we're going to fix it. The bad news is you lost some banquets, and you didn't lose just a couple, but you lost a couple of really strong weddings and banquets that left because of bad management or mold remediation or just neglect from not being called back, and now we're behind the eight ball trying to catch up. Well, Ralph, that's your problem. You make us better and you catch up. And you're right, that is my problem, and I am behind the eight ball, and I am going to catch us up, but it's not going to be in a day, so I'm asking for patience. As far as the basics are concerned, as far as great food and great service and a beautiful looking facility, I don't want you to give me a day. It'll be done before you set foot in there. That's not what I'm asking for patience for. It's going to take me eight months to get banquets and weddings back to where they should be. Now, we started that process, and the fall's starting to shape up fine, but our summer stinks. We have one banquet scheduled for the beach club, one, and it's 400 firefighters who want draft beer and hamburgers. So we're not making the mortgage payments on them. We have two weddings in the summertime. The good news is September's starting to turn a corner and October, November's starting to kick in, and next year, with what we've done up there, we think we're going to knock it out of the park. We're getting great feedback from outside wedding planners, not just the one we have, but from people who we're giving tours to and saying, "Look what we have here, look at this facility, look at what we're doing, new management." We have Stu and Joel put together a great banquet options, buffets or plated or this or that, and we're starting to turn heads. Now, there's a difference between turning heads and getting the ink signed on a paper, and we'll get there. That's a promise, but you've got to understand, it's going to take us a while to turn that damaged brand into a brand again. I think that whoever comes into dinner, right out of the gate, and again, I'm going to stick by my words, from day one, you're going to go back home and you're going to say to your neighbor, "Hmm, they did it. They said they were going to give me good service out of the gate, they said they were going to give me good food at a good price, and, you know, they pulled it off." But that word has to spread, and that's going to take a little bit of while, and, you know, that's something you don't want to hear, but it will happen. It's a truth and it will happen. So that's the State of the Union as I have here on my clipboard, and I'm hoping that I answered a good 90% of the questions, but if I didn't, then, as long as it's okay with Mr. Bailey, then Matt and I are available to answer whatever questions that you all have. Should I just point? Fire away.
I just need to... So I assume there's a website? When is this where the websites and the licenses, that could be a big part of the marketing for people requiring from the library?
There is.
When will the website be really?
Now, Ocean Pines has a marketing and promotions division, and the head of that division is Denise, and she's very good. The good thing, good was coming out of my mouth, the word good. She's very good at what she does. She's already started that process, and if you want some, an expounded answer on it, as long as it's okay with Denise, she could probably answer that question better than I.
So we are working to integrate one of the sites, the Ocean Pines, our own website, where it's currently live. We are going to pitch out social media, there will be a lot of hard copies, documents for you all. At least it's going to do a lot of radio, television, and we're going to try to reach through the D-Blask network, if you find it to be most effective, and that's your email newsletter, you can look to that, but our website will be the home for all of the information.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
What about the waitresses? They're the ones that wait on us, so we need to do the best we can.
Okay.
How are you gonna do that?
Well, she's wondering about service, the waitress. Let me start with the Beach Club. The Beach Club is going to go back to grab-and-go food. Happy hour in grab-and-go food. Grab-and-go food, it just makes sense. We're gonna have, you can come up, you can get what you want, listen, I hate to equate things to Wawa, but listen, they're great at what they do. You walk up to that counter, you put a thing in, you walk out, by the time you've paid for that, someone's screaming out, "74?" And what's wrong with that? Nothing. Well, we're gonna do the exact same thing, we're gonna do grab-and-go food, you come up, you order what you want, 74, come up and get it. That being said, we are gonna have cocktail servers and cocktail servers serving out into the property, into the beach area, into those tables. If you just want to sit there and have a beer, if you just want to get another pina colada with probably some Calypso rum in it, they're gonna take your order, and they're gonna deliver you, and listen, if you sitting there, and the waitress says, "Can I get you a drink?", and you say, "Yeah, you know, I'd like a pina colada, and is there any chance you can get me one of those burgers?", she's gonna say, "Of course," because that's the kind of service we're gonna provide. She's gonna say, "Of course I can," and she'll get it, and then she'll just run the ticket to you. But now, I'm assuming that 90% of our business, food-wise, are gonna be grab-and-go, which takes the server element out of it, except for the counter person. At the Yacht Club, all I can say is, we're gonna provide the same service all of our other properties do, and I'm gonna tell you to do this. Get online, and check out our Facebook site at our last restaurant, we opened up Rare and Rye, and go to the sections where we get ratings, and I want you to see that we have a 92% five-star rating. And then I want you to go to any other restaurant you want, any other restaurant. I want you to go to Roots Chris' website, and I want you to see what kind of a five-star rating they have for service, and compare it to us there. That's what we're bringing to the Yacht Club. So I hope that answers your question about service. We have history behind it, we're gonna bring it, you're gonna get it. Yes, ma'am.
Hold on. Sorry to interrupt you, if you can speak in short. Are you also gonna be handling the food and beverage at the Turn's Grill, and pools, as well as are you doing a daily inventory to check products consumed against sales receipts, since we've had issues with that?
Right, okay, well, we will not be doing anything at the Turn's Grill this year. I told Mr. Bailey, if he's interested in us after this year, that we'd be interested in taking a look at the Turn's Grill. As far as inventory's concerned, our inventory is done on a monthly basis. We take inventory monthly. Does that mean? We take inventory monthly. Forty-eight hours after inventory's been turned into Brooks Accounting, they send back a P&amp;L. That P&amp;L tells us what our cost of sales was for beer and wine, our cost of sales for liquor, and our cost of sales for food, it's broken down into those three categories. If that's within the percentages of standard operating procedure, then we don't do anything. If there's an issue, and one of them's even a percentage higher, then we go to weekly inventories, until we figure out what the problem was. Well, Ralph, 1% higher in inventory, you know, what's the big deal with that? Well, listen, 1% of $500,000 is a lot of money. So to answer your question, it will not be daily, it would take way too many man-hours, it will be done, if our numbers don't come back, the right channel on a monthly basis. Okay? Yes, sir?
Are you ever going to call us here?
Okay, we are planning now to be open all year, let me give you our hours of operations. We are gonna be open seven days a week from Memorial Day until Labor Day. After that, I believe it starts October 1, where we are allowed to go down to three days a week, at the Yacht Club. We don't intend to go to three days a week until business says to us, "Go down to three days a week, you're not making enough money." Then we will. But, you know, here's something that's really interesting that's never been done here before. I have a taxi company that's gonna have two taxis outside of the Yacht Club on Fridays and Saturdays, just sitting there. If a customer wants to take a taxi to go home, he can, or if someone wants to call in through Beach Bites and get an order to go, we're gonna deliver food to your house. We're gonna do curb-side service in the wintertime out of the Yacht Club to the 8,452 residences in Ocean Pines. Which will help us stay open, and help keep our labor pool employed year-round. Well, why is that important? If your labor pool's employed year-round, it means they don't go on unemployment. If they don't go on unemployment, it means your employer contribution to the state of Maryland doesn't go up, which means your payroll wages don't go up on a weekly basis. The longer we can keep our people employed, the less that happens. We're only gonna keep them employed if everyone says, "Wow, this curb-side service there is great." Not only can I don't have to drive there if I don't want to, I can if I want to, I can have a taxi guy take it to my house. There obviously is gonna be a fee for the taxi company, but that's our plan for our year-round business. Yes, sir?
I got a couple of comments and a couple of questions.
Here you go.
First, I think the outsourcing, which they finally have understood to do it, is a great idea, I don't know why we didn't do it five years ago when I was asking them. People that know restaurants should be running restaurants. The other is that you've already covered, because I don't know, I never ran a restaurant, but I've eaten over a thousand of them around the world, and I know consistent food, consistent service, and consistent pricing, anywhere is the rule. I don't care if it's in China, if it's in London, if it's in Paris, or wherever, it's the same, and so you said that. So I think that's a good principle, and if you can do it, that's gonna be great, because if I go in a restaurant, one week, and then two weeks later I go in, I expect the same thing. I mean, I don't wanna use McDonald's, but around the world, McDonald's is the same. It isn't any good, but it's the same.
Well, listen, I use McDonald's as an analogy all the time, and the exact thing I say is, "You can get a Big Mac in Berlin, Maryland, and you can get a Big Mac in Boise, Idaho, and it's the exact same."
And you can get a Big Mac in Japan, and it's the same, except it's teriyaki sauce on it, but anyway. The other thing is, my question is, what do you want to do to start to get traffic? In other words, most of the time, if a restaurant's open, and it's new and all that, I mean, you're not just gonna, you certainly have a brand that's broken, which I agree, so what are you gonna get traffic in? I mean, you're gonna have some kind of specials, or whatever, to start to get the people to come in, not only from the community, but from around the community. There's a lot of people outside this community that supports, whether South Gate, or some of these others. So something to get the traffic in would be, I think, a good idea.
Well, we are gonna do it in stages. Our first priority is gonna get back to our home base, which is Ocean Pines. We're gonna advertise to our Ocean Pines people, Denise has got a program set up on the website, and we're gonna have great specials to bring back the Ocean Pines people. Chef has got a daily set of specials that are discounted, and a lunch special discounted, that we're gonna push just to get everybody back in Ocean Pines. After we succeed at getting your confidence level back to the point of where we need it to be, then we're gonna go after outside business. But, listen, open and honest communication. It's gonna be very hard to get some of Ocean City to come to Ocean Pines to have lunch or dinner. Now, it won't be by boat, because guys with boats love that marina, they just don't come anymore because the food stinks and the service is horrible. But we're gonna solve that problem, so as soon as we do, so I'm thinking that Saturdays and Sundays, and especially our Sunday brunch, is gonna bring people in from out of town. Otherwise, we're gonna start with our basics, and that's gonna be going for our core base.
And the other, my last question is, what about your bartenders? I mean, are you gonna have bartenders that, I'll just use the example, like at Fager's or Secrets? I mean, the money for any place is in the liquor, you know that, and you're gonna have happy hour, which is great, but you need really good bartenders.
Well, I'll give you my thought process, and what we say, have a saying with all of our servers, and I'll include bartenders in our service. We hire the smile and teach the skill. You can teach a skill, you can't teach a smile. So we hire the smile and teach the skill, and then, once we see how that skill is learned by the smiles, then we weed out from there. Our bartenders are spectacular at all of our locations, and they're gonna be no less here, fast, attentive, friendly, and with a great smile.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone on this side? I think I'm leaving people out. Yes, sir?
Can you call for reservations to smaller rooms?
You know, we hadn't discussed reservations, this is the first question that's gotten me stumped, we hadn't gone across that yet. My, I don't wanna say yes or no, because I don't wanna give the wrong information here, my gut tells me probably yes, at least starting with groups of more than six out of the gate, and then after that, you know, we'll see how it folds, so, that's the first question that's actually stumped me. Yes, sir?
I think the question from the hotel is, is it the yacht club? Do you need any of the major renovations to yacht club? Why would they prepare, I know this is not a question for you, but this is a question of the power to be addressed, why would they have repairs in the sprinkler system, the boarding and the decking, and the mold taken care of in the yacht club renovation?
Okay, well, the boarding and the decking and the sprinklers is the Beach Club, not the Yacht Club. The Yacht Club was, again, mold, and like you said, that was before we got here, you know, that happens, and I think, and it was addressed before we got here, we were told this is what happened. Why the Beach Club deteriorated? Open and honest communication, it was neglected. The Beach Club was neglected, and it has been neglected, and not, by the way, not just this last year. You know, let's be serious here. You know, it's not just last year's managers that dropped the ball on this, this has been for years. So, we're taking baby steps, first off, the big steps are the ones that need to be taken, then we've got a bunch of stuff in the back of our brain here that we're putting together on what we think can make the Beach Club as spectacular as the Yacht Club's gonna be. We're gonna get through this summer, and see how much money we can get for our renovations that we wanna make to the Beach Club, and then take it to the next level, where it's not what's mandated to us, but what we'd like to do. Okay? Yes, sir?
Got anything going on for, like, football on Sunday, during the winter?
Well, and, boy, am I gonna get booed here in a second, but...
Don't say it, then.
Hail to the Redskins.
Boo.
My business partner...
I'm an Eagles fan.
He's an Eagles fan.
I'm an Eagles fan, all my life. Yay!
So, we are gonna have football specials, we love us some football, and we're gonna have great screens in the bar areas with some DirecTV tickets, NFL tickets for that, yes. We definitely will have football specials. That was the easiest question I've had tonight. Yes, ma'am?
All right. You sound terrific, God bless you, and I hope you succeed, but I have... But many years back, we had several good people run it, it was the Marriott, Canteen, and several others. They promised us the world, but it never came through, so I am wondering, how many of your promises are written in the contract?
Well, great question. I don't know about the Marriott, or who else was here before, but I can tell you this, and I'm gonna revert back to what Matt said earlier. We've lived here since the 80s, our business is only gonna thrive if we pull, okay, I'm gonna be really open and honest with you. We had the option to take this job or another one, the other one was a better job. I'm gonna tell you why we took this one, because this brand is so damaged, that if we make, we turn this around the way we're going to, the price of our services just doubled to these other locations, and we were willing to gamble on ourselves, we pulled a Kirk Cousins going back to football. We said, "We'll take that one-year contract at X number of dollars, and we will not sign a long term, because we know we're gonna knock this out of the park, and then when our time comes, we're gonna get the contract we want." Kirk Cousins just signed for a guaranteed $84 million for the Minnesota Vikings. So, our future relies on making the promises we're making tonight come to fruition. As far as what's in the contract, we do not make a bonus. Zero dollar bonus if we don't hit budget. Zero dollar bonus if we don't make budget, okay? We make a zero dollar extra bonus if the two combined don't make us a profit above bonus. Now, that's in the contract, which is online, that you can read. The only thing guaranteed to us is a $100,000 fee. Now, I have 12 employees, full-time in corporate, $100,000 isn't changing our way of life in any way whatsoever. I wanna make it clear, I am not making light of $100,000, but we're not doing this for $100,000. We're doing this for the $100,000, for the bonus we're gonna make by hitting our budget, and for the bonus we're gonna make by exceeding budget and going into profit, and then to raise our price for everybody else who wants our services, because we knocked this out of the park. So those are my two answers. Yep?
Thank you, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, I'm short, no. I know, speaking for myself and many of my friends, it seemed like last year that it was, we were concerned if there were problems, or things we thought could do better, it was like we were shouting in the wind, it was just, there was no one out there listening to us. And it seems to me that, over the course of the next year, six months to a year, two years, that in order to make the Yacht Club and the Beach Club function effectively, is to have one of the sources of information, probably the best source of information, are the people who utilize those services. And my question to you is, during this process, in May, June, July, August, September, and so on, if there are ways in which we, as individuals, believe that the product could be improved, what do you suggest that the members of the community do? What's the best way for them to communicate those concerns and those suggestions to you folks, so that we can have a product that we're all happy with?
Ralph, great question.
Can I get this?
Sure.
You're stealing old thunder, all right? One thing we do at Mad Or Company is, we have a phrase, it's called MBWA, managed by walking around. We don't sit behind a desk, we don't stay in an office and push paper. If I wanted to do that, I would've gotten an office job in a cubicle somewhere up in New York. We are constantly on the floor, it will be, there's a slim chance you will come to the Yacht Club for dinner, or lunch, and not get visited by me at your table, and the rest of our team, managers. We are constantly talking to all of our guests, we like to take information right then and there. We hear you, we want your feedback, and we wanna make it better if there was an issue. So you will constantly see a managing member of Mad Or Companies at each location, and managers on the floor constantly while the business is in operation.
We also have comment cards at every location, that are delivered by the server to each and every table, so that you can write then and there, at the end of your experience, say whatever it is you want to say. That comment card goes to the manager on your way out the door, and then we read your comments, and then, listen, if we get enough comment cards that say, "You should have a trivia night, you should have a trivia night, you should have a..." "Trivia night, you should have a trivia night, we're gonna have a trivia night." Now, that was one of the first things I said. We had zero intentions of having a trivia night, until we heard it 6,000 times, and that was one of the first things I said, so we obviously listened, because I preempted your question with an example. So between the comment cards and Matt's, yes, we do a lot of table visits, we call them table visits, and it'll be a point in time when you see someone walk by your table, and you will look down, because you know that if you look at them, they're gonna stop and talk to you. We do table visits to verbally get it from you, but comment cards are an important part of our business. You know, you don't grow if you don't listen to your customers, you don't grow, you just fail.
There are a large number of clubs with a lot of members here, right here in Ocean Pines, who now go to outside restaurants when they want their banquets, their end-of-year parties, their card parties, holiday luncheons, instead of using our facilities right here because of a poor experience. Can you do something to lure those clubs, which is a large number of people right here in the Pines, back to use the Yacht Club?
Well, we're gonna give, we're gonna give good deals to the clubs, and especially the old Pine Clubs, and that save them money and make us money. The only way that that's gonna increase, and I'm gonna go back to the damaged brand theory, because the clubs are as damaged as the customer base, is after the first one comes in and... the first one comes in and says, "Well, the Rotary Club had a great experience for 120 people. We got great food, great service, and a great drink package. Everything was clean, everything was friendly." And they say that to the Swim Team Club. And then it goes on and on and on. So, it, word of mouth is going to help the damaged brand of the clubs. And by the way, I, I know that, because we've talked to several clubs already, who have said the exact same thing you just said. "We had a horrible experience." And when you go, this is a statistic now, I'm a statistic guy. When you go to a restaurant and have a bad experience, you'll tell seven people. When you go to a restaurant and you have a good experience, you'll tell three. So, it behooves us to make sure you had a- Okay. Definitely upstairs. Um, what, because there'd be, oh, well, well, you know, that's one of the things we're working on. We're working on, we're working on acoustics, you know, the, we're working on ceiling tiles and the acoustics. There, there's tricks to that trade, but, you know, that's a, a learning curve, damaged brand thing that we have, that's going to take us a while. Well, here's what we did downstairs, for example. Remember when I talked about the, the moving walls?
Yes.
The moving wa- yes. They're called moving walls because they move. They're six foot wide by six foot tall. They're beautiful. They're this thick, and they absorb sound. So, they can go on the elevator that's on the kitchens, and go up to the second floor, get rolled off, and the room all of a sudden goes from a 250-person room to a 100-person room, with that same beautiful view and that feel of intimacy. Okay? Yes, ma'am? Well, we have to inherit inventory. Well, yeah, but it, but it comes in at a cost to us. We have to pay for the inventory as to what it costs. We just don't get $30,000 worth of inventory for free. Life would be great if that was the case. Well, it's been paid for by Ocean Pines, but when it transfers to our books, it transfers as an inventory, yes, as a, and I'm just using the term $30,000. Nobody called me that. I don't know how much it is. But it's a certain dollar amount that, that the value placed on it, and then that comes to our books. So, we inherit. Not- If it depreciates, it'll be sold. Yeah. Well, payroll obviously comes out of Ocean Pines. I mean, payroll's going to be around $400,000. We only make $100,000, so it costs me. Well, that's a good question. I mean, maybe 75, but the employees are, are our employees. They're on Matt Or Company's payroll. We get reimbursed for payroll dollars. Now, because I see the wheels spinning, we can't just pay somebody $800,000 knowing you're going to pay them. You know why? That goes against our books. And at the end of the year, we don't make our bonus. And how much money does Ralph make if we don't hit our budget?
Zero.
Zero. Okay? That's in the contract and right out there. So, there's no incentive for me to pay his nephew $30,000 for coming in and waiting tables for a night. None. There's less than incentive for that. Keeping payroll in line on the percentage that we have is, is a bonus for us. Yes, sir?
You're talking about bonuses. In all my career, I have never, in my life, seen an organization like this that budgets to lose money. And this organization budgets to lose money, and then offers you a bonus if you come under that budgeted loss. Example, if they put $200,000 into the budget for the Yacht Club to lose money, and you come in at $150,000 loss, you get a bonus.
That's not true, sir. You can read that correctly.
And that's, that's the way it has been reported in-
The budgeted loss for the, for the Yacht Club is a mirror for the budget gain for the Beach Club. It's budgeted for $100,000 loss at the Yacht Club, and $100,000 win at the Beach Club. Now, individual bonuses, if we were to, to exceed that loss of $100,000 by $50,000, then we would make a $25,000 bonus. We get half of what we, we beat. Now, you've got to understand what we're coming into, too.
I understand, and I'm not blaming you all. I, I, this is just a, a comment against our own organization, if you would, the OPA. Uh, I just don't understand ever budgeting for a loss. That is just, in my mind, a defeat of the organization. They should be, they should be reducing their expenses to the point where they don't have to budget for a loss.
Well, I think, and I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe last year, the Yacht Club lost $400,000. Now, by budgeting the $100,000 loss, that is, that is an uptick. And remember, the, the Beach Club last year lost money, and this year, it lost money. And this year, we don't make a penny unless we make $100,000.
Well, that's the way it should be. But in the past, you know, our previous, uh, two general managers got bonuses for coming in a little bit under the budgeted loss figure in, in our financials. Be that as it may, and I know this is probably another question for John Bailey, but, what's the status of the mold remediation? Uh, are you going to be able to still meet your opening date?
Um, I can answer that question. I was there yesterday as the last guys came in to finish mold remediation. Uh, they had finished the work they had done. The inspector came in, they said there were four intakes that needed to be redone. They brought them back. They finished the four intakes yesterday. I was actually on property when it happened. So, that is completed, and our first event is actually before our opening date, because it was already on the books, and it was the PRMC nurse convention, and we didn't want to lose those local nurses. So, we will be able to make that event, and we will be able to make that, that happen.
One other question on the excess liquor inventory. I know from experience that you can return the product to the distributors. I don't know why our own administration has not done that. However, you coming in have the opportunity to return some of that Malibu rum and other product that is in excess of what we should have on hand.
Well, some of it can be returned, yes. I think I mentioned that some of it can be returned, and then some of it, because of its past prime date or a label change, it can't be done.
Some of it was bought when the county still sold liquor.
Matt's trying to tell you that it's been there for that long, some of it has been there for that long, when the county was selling liquor.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead.
One, one other question. What, what happened to the old tables and chairs? Uh, did, were they turned in for any kind of a credit? Did somebody else buy them? Uh, are we getting anything for them? The tables and chairs that you removed from the Yacht Club?
The stools are going to be used at the Beach Club, and the tables and chairs are being held in storage to be used at, at another time or day, but they're not being thrown away.
So, there's excess inventory again.
They could be sold, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and, I'm sorry, Ralph, I'm going to ask you to step aside for a moment, because I think what we want to do, the, one of the main purposes- And I do want to thank very much, I think that everybody here feels your enthusiasm, and if the service and the food is as good as the enthusiasm from you guys, we're all going to end up winners. So, I think this is very terrific, very happy to have you. I did not mean to really interrupt that portion of the meeting. However, um, there's a lot of people who came tonight to, to ask questions on a multitude of things. You will not be prevented from asking additional questions to Matt Or. But we need to be fair to everyone who has come out, and we, I'm Elaine with the Communications Committee. We have set up a few guidelines for that, because we did expect a large crowd, and are very excited to see it. Um, I think that the board is doing a wonderful thing this evening by trying to open up those lines of communication and transparency, which is at the heart of the Matt Or Companies, as they say. That, um, it seems like most of the issues we have are just not understanding what's going on and not being communicated to. So, I, I do thank the board for doing this this evening. And in order to kind of move that forward, and be fair to those of you who have come out, you may actually have, although the Yacht Club has always been a big issue for everyone, you may actually have questions that aren't about the Yacht Club, that you would like to take this opportunity. Based on the size of the crowd, we hope to get through as many as we can. I'm not sure how late we can stay. I think that 8:30, 9 o'clock, maybe 9 o'clock, we're going to have to cut things off. But, um, we do have a few ground rules, so that we can make sure as many people as possible are able to, um, address anything they'd like to. We're going to do this round robin style. Um, in other words, you get one question.
Since I was in line, may I ask my question?
You are going to be first.
Thank you very much.
As soon as I, as soon as I give everybody the ground rules, so please.
The timing is perfect, because this question may not be for Matt Or, it may be for, uh, the Board of Directors or somebody else. You may not have an answer. It's a li-
Yeah. If you could just let me finish, everybody understands the rules. And then we'll move forward and, and get as much done as we can. In order to make things go quickly, because there will be a lot of questions, you get one question. So, decide what your question's going to be. Um, and we also ask you to make it concise. Everybody's got a lot of opinions that they want to express. This isn't the time or the place. It's a time to get your questions answered, to provide information, and give the board the opportunity, or John, or Matt Or, to provide you with that information that you want. So, please make good use of it. It'd be fair to everybody to be able to do that. Um, we do ask, as Denise did bring to my attention, although it seems easier to pass that mic around, it isn't seeming to work as well. So, if people can start lining up, as soon as you ask your question, please pass it to the next one. While your question is being answered, it would help move things along and get as much answered as possible. So, thank you, and I look forward to this this evening, as I'm sure you do. Oh, important, I forgot, and Josh Brendan reminded me earlier. Please give your name and your address, and also, if the question's for somebody specific, whether it's a board member, Matt Or, whomever, please, you know, go ahead and address it to that party.
Thank you. I think I'm going to follow all your rules and regulations. My name is John Reeves. I live at 18 Fishing Creek Lane. My question is this. What is the name of our club going to be?
You mean the Yacht Club? The Yacht Club is going to be called the Yacht Club? That was easy. The Beach Club is going to be called the Beach Club. Frank Daly, the, Frank Daly, 834 Ocean Parkway. Doug, this question is to you. We had a deep dive audit that we paid extra for this year, and I have read the report on the audit from the Chief Financial Officer. My question is, what has the board done to validate and verify that the recommendations have been implemented across all departments and are currently being used for all transactions?
Well, I just, I, I mean, I know you asked, Doug, but I just, just because this is kind of my area, I just want to, so, oh, the, the auditors this year are the same auditors that we had last year for that process, SCH, and part of their audit is going to be to review every single one of those procedures.
So, it's an operational issue, and I will tell them myself, I have not gone to the general manager and asked specifically if every single item that was listed as an audit deficiency has been addressed at the staffing level, okay? However, it's incumbent on the GM to do that. So, as an action item, I will take that to say, I'll go back to the GM and ask him to give us a line-by-line update on what happens. You also go back, if you looked at the last board, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to turn my back to the other folks here, but if you go back to the last board meeting, Pat had a list of all of the things that were done, and said, "This one is done, this is in progress, this one is being considered." So, and have we published the, uh, the minutes from the last, or that chart from the last board meeting yet? Yeah, sorry. So, it should be up, it should be up on the website. That's another area to go back and take a look at and say, hey, here are the things that SCH identified as deficiencies, and it gave a status update. But I will go back and ask JB if anything has changed since that, uh, that report has been published.
Um, podium?
Okay, I'm Peggy Turner, 337 Ocean Parkway. I just want to follow, I want to follow on with one question. Uh, Director Stupick had her chart up, and it had X's in the boxes where they were being, could you please add a comment, line or something that tells us how this was implemented? Like, what was done? Don't just tell me, I put a check here, it was done. Explain to us what kind of control was put in place to implement that recommendation in that department with that item?
I thought that the, the extended audit inside, their managemental processes were going to work. And then that has, that has explanation for, for each area, exactly what procedures were involved.
Yeah. It's in it? That we can find that? Because I haven't seen it, that's why I was asking. Okay. And one other, uh, it's another question.
No, we've got, we do have to move on, and I'm sorry, I am going to interrupt just briefly. Um, Matt Or Group does have another appointment that they have to get to, so they will be leaving. I feel like they have really answered a lot of questions. Um, they'll certainly make themselves very much available onsite, as they have told us. So, anything else, you are welcome to get in touch with them, find them at the Yacht Club or at the Beach Club and have those answered. Hopefully, they've addressed most of everybody's concerns this evening, and we're very happy. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Molly McNaney, 81 Clubhouse. Are you hiring?
Yes.
I'm one of the directors. I just wanted to add my personal comment to the question that Frank Daly asked. Um, I think he makes a very good point, as well as Peggy Turner. And I would like to, um, not necessarily answer a question, but really provide a comment, a suggestion. I think maybe what we should consider doing as a board, and also as a management, as you know, we are approaching the, our fiscal year-end is April 31st, and we will undertake- know, we are approaching the, our fiscal year end is April 31st, and we will undertake an annual audit. Perhaps we should add to the scope for this audit, for the auditors to go back and to make sure that what was proposed last year, in fact, has been implemented. And who better to do that than our auditors, as opposed to our Management, who has a self-interest to give it a good passing card? So I would like to, you know, just leave you with that thought, and also my colleagues, let's take this on at the next board meeting, let's see if we need to add this to the scope for the next audit. Right, yeah, and, and then let's validate that what was recommended last year, in fact, has been implemented. Thank you.
Let me add one more thing to that. We did do that. At the last meeting, we said we were going to go ahead and add a review of the deep dive, so that you don't have to take our word for it. We're going to actually have the auditors go right back through that list again and check to make sure that everything is in place.
My name is Brett Hill, I'm at 3 Winward Court. Back to the presentation, I think, that Frank was referencing at the last board meeting, part of that was also listing their financials for this year as a cost per household. And that had $792 per household for operations after deficit, and then it listed other sums that define this cost, but it wasn't actually money spent, it was money we put in the bank towards reserves, it's $293. Looking at the last financials, we spent $113 per household on reserves, which made the actual cost this fiscal year per household $905, meaning that this year we had a $16 surplus per household, or we put, we have $16 in cash left over from every homeowner, even with this supposed deficit. With that, how did the Board justify raising their assessments by $30 next year, when even this year, on a horrible year by any account, we still have money left over? And on the three years past, this past year and the two years prior, there's $135 left over that went into the bank from each homeowner. That's a total of over $1 million in 36 months that we haven't been able to spend, all money that we've collected. And you put that on top of all of us waterfront homeowners like myself, who paid $450 a year in bulkheads, and now we have $2.5 million in the bank on bulkheads with less than 10% of the money collected this year spent. I mean, it seems like we're racking up a lot of money, and even though we haven't done the best job in operations, we still have money left over.
Well, one of the problems is, as you know, if you take a quick look at the balance sheet, and you really take the difference in reserves, and reserves, for everybody to know, is so that when something breaks down, we don't have big jumps. The reserves increased by approximately 1.5 million, even though the total balance sheet there only went up a half a million. So, the other thing I would say is, take a look at your cash, current assets. Last year at this time, it was $2.5 million. Today, it's a million dollars. Somewhere, that's money gone. So if you did, where the money really is, is money that we haven't spent crazily the rest of this year on all kinds of stuff that wasn't in the budget last year or in the budget this year early on. So that's where it is. We get to the end of this year, and we'll see where we are operationally and make the proper adjustments. There's a lot more to it than just simply looking at a single line item. You really need to look at where the reserves are, you need to look at your cash flow, and you need to look at what we budgeted versus what we spent, and the amount of money we had when we passed additional spending, including capital, which comes out of that assessment that wasn't in the budget. And that's how we get hit, so...
The cash reserves, everything is up because we have that extra money that wasn't spent.
The cash reserves, you don't get to use. Those stay to feed some. For instance, last year, if you take a look what we did, we spent far more money in reserves than we had budgeted. So the budget was a fake, because we added a whole lot of stuff. We added platform tennis courts that went right against new capital that wasn't in the budget.
But you think the three years, it's $135 extra per household that Ocean Pines puts to bed.
And it's reserves. So do you want to spend the reserves, or do you want to save it for the person that lives here who's 40 or 45 years old, and five years from now, when they have to replace a roof, there's no money there to do it?
There's $8 million there, we didn't need to go up by $30, that's the question.
Well, I'm telling you what, if you hadn't lost $745,000 in a year, we'd be okay.
All right. We're going to cut this off right now with any personal attacks or comments.
I don't have a side in this, so please, don't, don't throw me in on this.
I'm asking everyone, Board members and audience included, all of them are under the same guidelines. Everybody is here tonight because they care about Ocean Pines, and you have to respect one another. We get nothing accomplished by personally attacking anyone. We're going to move on from this. I'm going to ask everybody, and I'm going to have you cut off if you, if you continue, or we'll just end this. And if you all don't want to see other town hall meetings where we can get information, then sabotage it if you like. So go ahead, please, everybody, stick to the rules and be respectful.
As idealistic as it sounds, my personal intent of this meeting was to say, wow, there's a lot of ideas out there, and there's a lot of questions out there, all right? So how can we use this energy and this forum to help us move forward, okay? I'm a big believer in, the past is two things. Number one, you don't get a do-over. But number two, it serves as that reference of, don't do the things that didn't work, and continue to do the things that did work and expand on them, all right? There's a lot of information out here, there's a lot of people that have a real desire to move things forward, all right? I use the analogy of, I'm looking out the windshield, not the rearview mirror, all right? I'd rather spend our energy, our collective energy, and I'm a homeowner, I'm an Association member first and foremost. So how collectively can we move forward as people on the Board, as people on Advisory Committees, as members in general? All right? So, the back and forth, you did this, I did that, while it may satisfy some people's internal reasoning, I would just offer that we, we use our collective energies to try and move forward, okay? If it's something that we, that can elicit some additional conversation, additional contribution for somebody to say, hey, I've got another idea on that, or maybe we can expand on that in such a way that there might be some future benefit. To me personally, that's the kind of information, the kind of dialogue, the kind of discussion that I want to have, all right? As a member first, and not as a Director, as a member first. And I just ask that we just can keep that in mind, okay?
Hi, my name is Debbie Bloom, I'm at 65 Martinique Circle, and I would just like to know, where are the reward points from our credit card and our corporate accounts, and why are they not listed in the revenue portion of the general administration budget, like the casino and the fund interest? I have an American Express card, and I can see where my points go very quickly. Mr. Bailey, or the Board?
At the July 28th, 2017 Board Meeting, we were presented with design and build proposals from Willa Construction that was based on the then-existing Beach Club construction contract for $536,000 for the second floor of the Country Club. Now, nine months later, after an approved, an additional $40,000 expenditure for drawings for a new bid, the Board is now looking at an expense of close to $1 million for the same project, and facing another summer with an unusable facility. What's the Board's plan to get this project done, and on the previous budget?
I can answer part of that. The Board received a memo from me last Friday, I think it was, for discussion purposes at the Board Meeting coming up next week regarding the second floor of the Country Club. We had, part of the pricing that we got back in there, a little over, 840 was the low bid, 80 to 890 was the higher, and that was not to get it done by June 22nd. One was to be done by August 30th, and the other one's going to be done by September 28th. We only got two bids out of the seven companies that we had shared information with, the RFP. So, the recommendation from me and staff was to go ahead and delay that, wait till the fall, rebid it, so that we can get more competitive bids, hopefully reducing that price. So that's the going-forward piece of it. Looking back, as far as why we didn't do the original plan, I don't really know, but at the same time, we did make some changes to the design of that facility, based upon, you know, use of the space, and it was just a different plan.
I hear you, not to interrupt, but the RFP that the Board got was for $536,000. Even with additional space, how's it another half a million dollars to do it? You weren't here then, so I don't think that you're the proper person to answer the question.
I think part of it is, we were trying to get a bid to get us to June 22nd, so that was, and we only had two bids, so that was going to inflate some. Now, whether it's a difference of 300 and some odd thousand or not, that's to be determined as we get to the fall. But, go back to what you were saying.
Can a Board Member that can comment, that was there at the meeting, make that comment or answer me?
Yeah, I was one of the Board Members that was present at that last year's meeting and the discussion that took place, so I'll give you my individual recollection of what took place. It's obviously not the Board's version, but it is my personal, individual recollection. What was brought to the Board's attention at that time was basically not the result of the RFP process. It was basically given to the Board as a estimate, a sole source for that particular company that we were asked to make a decision on. The Board had an issue, number one, with the fact that it wasn't a competitive procurement, there was no RFP done. Number two, from what I remember, the scope did not include, just as an example, an elevator, which is additional $100,000 in expenditure. The current plan calls for an elevator. So I think what we need to do really is realize that what was proposed last year, and this is not just for you, but I think for the, for the community in general, to understand that the reason the Board didn't act on last year's recommendation is because we didn't follow the procurement process, and also because we wanted to make sure that our plan for the Country Club, in fact, reflects functionally what needs to be done. So that was delayed, and now we are here today with a different plan that includes an elevator, that I know one of the Members here will be very happy to hear, because she's been asking for an elevator, and, and I think that reflects the General Manager's current action with regard to this procurement, and what the Board is going to be looking at in terms of award, and I think the cost is definitely an issue, which is the reason we are not fast-tracking this and doing it right now, because this is expensive season when everybody is busy, and the costs therefore go up. In a fall, prices will get down, will come down, and the Board will probably be looking at a much more aggressive and cost-effective proposal. So that's just my individual comment.
I appreciate your comment, but even with $100,000 elevator, it's still less than $850,000.
Hi, my name is Jen Fold, and I live at 46 Beacon Hill Road, and my question is to the Board and to the G M., and it's about fraud, corruption, and theft in Ocean Pines' businesses. The confirmed theft of money from the safe in the Administration Building is indicative of a much larger problem. Now, we all know that criminals are rarely caught the first time they commit a crime. So, the confessed thief of the money from the Administration Building likely stole from the safe on multiple occasions over an unknown period of time. Additionally, individuals who commit theft usually do not do so just from one place. I would surmise, based on my experiences as an O I G. investigator specializing in fraud, waste, abuse, and mismanagement, that this individual also committed theft, fraud, and possibly other crimes in other areas that he had access to. Employee theft and fraud is a crime of opportunity. The employee at the Yacht Club obviously identified an opportunity to commit theft from the Ocean Pines Association and took advantage of it. If fraud, theft, and corruption has occurred in one area of Ocean Pines...
Ma'am, ma'am, we really need you to ask the question.
I'm about to ask a question.
All right, we, we really want to be able to...
You need to give a background for it, so I'm almost...
No, we need a concise question. We have a lot of people here who would like to get answers to questions this evening. We, you know, please wrap up.
I have one line left, and I'm done. So, my question is, my concern is, this has happened in other areas, our other businesses of Ocean Pines, and my question is, what is being done to address this problem?
One was just talked about, as far as having our end-of-year audit, going back and reviewing the same things that we went through in the deep dive and seeing how much of those have been implemented and how exactly they were implemented. Second of all, you have your forensic auditors, that will have our initiation meeting tomorrow, and they'll get going. And then, thirdly, I've been doing some operational audits. I am anxious to get to May and see everything working and operating, and then I can, I can take another shot at a lot of different little things, how A gets to B gets to C, and how we operate customer service-wise, too. And that will, so between the three of those things, I think we can get at a lot of that. The other, quite frankly, aspect to it is leadership by example, and, and as this approach and ethic works its way down, I think we'll, it's a culture change to get at some of this. I mean, there's, there's operational pieces, there's auditing pieces, there's the forensic pieces to it, but to change people's behavior, one, you got to hire the right people, and two, you have to stay on them, and you have to lead by example. And...
Why is that stolen?
If, if there, if there is evidence of theft, and again, we talked about this a few weeks ago, we were talking about the forensic audit, that if, there's one thing to do with forensic audit, one, does it find anything? And what it finds, is it actionable? Does it lead to an individual or a group of individuals that's got enough evidence that somebody, we can pursue that? That's all to be determined. And, anyway, I think I've kind of addressed that, but...
I'm Vanessa Adams, 78 Martinique Circle. I've lived here 20 years. Vanessa Adams, 78 Martinique Circle. I've lived here 20 years, and in the last five or six years, our drainage ditches have completely eroded, no one looks at them. We, in my neighborhood, we have people with water standing in their backyard. I have called the Association, and they said, we'll put a repair order in. They don't come look at it, and a lot of the construction people that have been in, a lot of the cable companies have come in, they've done their work and just destroyed our drainage, and in the last couple of years, I've gone to meetings where you argue about what kind of french fries you're going to serve, and I think a lot of people really care about their property and the drainage situation, and Mr. The General Manager, you got any thoughts on that?
Drainage is huge problem.
It's huge.
It is, I mean, it touches everywhere, and I've been on Martinique Circle.
And she lives on Martinique Circle. We could put a boat in one of the ditches.
Right.
It's unacceptable.
Right. We do have a drainage working... We do have a drainage working group that, actually, forget when our next meeting is, but we do have several residents working with that, with that group, staff, as well as county officials. It is, to me, being, this is our 50th year, and we still have a drainage problem, that we haven't, and, and some of the things, quite frankly, we're, we're not gonna be able to solve, because it would involve state, federal, core engineers, et cetera. But there, there are, as I've described it, there's sort of five elements to the whole drainage issue. One of it is, if, when it rains, like we had, what night was it? Monday? You know, when we had that deluge, you know, one of the things that a lot of our residents don't know is what the, how our drainage system is supposed to work. It's, it's supposed to drain out within 24 hours, but you're not gonna see it disappear in six hours. I know some, most of you hopefully know that, some of you don't. We also have 1,000 lots in Ocean Pines that you couldn't build on in today's planning and zoning world, but you can't build a place like Ocean Pines and Lake of the Wood and Brandon Mill with the current planning and development rules that are in place. So, that, that leads us to...
On Martinique Circle, the problem is very solvable. They've been neglected. I, I know how the drain works, because I'm out there, the neighborhood on the street, if you dig in your yard, it's like, you know, you go around there, and you'll see all the places that we dug. It, it is...
Right.
Eroded, and it's not even a hard fix.
Right.
But no one even shows up when they say they show up.
Where are they located?
I, I flagged them down the road one day, and they went, "Oh, honey, I'm Ocean Pines, you gotta call them." I flagged another one down, and he said I should call Ocean Pines. It, it really needs to be addressed.
I totally agree.
I don't care if I, I, I'd love a fancy yacht club, but, you know, I've lived here forever.
Right.
I'd like my yard not to be flooded.
Right. As I was saying, there are five elements to the whole drainage issue. One is, when we have those deluges of rain, we, the crews are out dealing with those areas that are flowing into the road, and we're blowing ditches out and culverts out and whatnot, and dealing with those issues. Then you have, I call them chronic areas that don't require engineering, but require more effort. A lot, some of what you may be talking about, maybe that type of issue, where we've got to do some, whether it's digging or replacing pipes that have failed, that have been crushed in over a period of time, I saw one of those yesterday, that's of providing water to back up into multiple properties. Right. And then the third, the third piece of it is the chronic pieces that require a little bit more money. We require some engineering and things like that. And then you've got areas that, I hope some of everybody has seen this, or heard it, or read about it. We have 82 miles of road, right? That's 164 miles of ditch is along the roads. Then we have the ones that are beside the properties and the ones that are behind properties. We have over 200 miles. We have a four-man crew, we have one jet vac truck, and we don't have a plan. How do you get at all of that without having a plan? So, that's part of the work of the Drainage Work Group, and we're going to need to spend more money on it, but without doing...
Start with Martinique Circle? When you go down Martinique, the whole circle, it's...
Oh, I, I know she's not kidding. I've been to Martinique Circle, but I, I can tell you 12 other places that are just as bad or sometimes worse. And, and part of the reason is because sometimes behind lots, there is no easement. The private, private line butts up to the private property line. I've, I've talked to the folks, "Well, why don't we just put in a new ditch, and put in a big pipe, and carry it out to here, and go on?" We can't do it. The county can't do it. The county's not gonna let us do it. The property owners could get together and do something, but it would still have to be approved by the county, and if it's a wetland, it ain't gonna happen anyway. So, there's all sorts of pieces to this puzzle, and it's not an easy answer. I'm not saying stuff doesn't have to get done, but it's gonna be a big lift, it's gonna require a lot of money, it'll make everything else pale in comparison. Yeah, I mean, there, there will be, and I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves to the Board members and the rest of the community, we are going to need more staff, we're gonna need money for engineering. Right now, I know that we did engineering design studies with an engineering firm for Sections 2 and 3, but everything else we have is the existing maps that were given to us by Boise Cascade 50 years ago. We need GPS, we need to do all of that and determine our, you know, granted, look at where we are, our, our, our water table's pretty high, we have very little elevation, so all of those things factor into what we can do and what we can't do. The county tells us what we can and can't do. I've certainly met with folks that are working with FEMA and flood insurance, and you've got water backing up into properties and into their homes and around their property, and we can only go in with a shovel and a rake, and we can't cut down trees, we can't dig anything, we can just pull out of what's in the ditch. That's not going to help that individual, and we can't do anymore, so...
My name is Gary Figallo. I live at 42 Wood Duck Drive. I'm here to speak for the crab pier on, on Manclan Creek. I've heard some, or seen some discussions about that, and this is one tiny little park that is one of the most beautiful places that's free in Ocean Pines, and I just am here to speak to see that it gets preserved.
That went on. I've signed a contract today, about eight hundred bucks, for a third-party consultant to do an inspection of the crabbing pier, so we'll get that done in the next couple of weeks and get something back from them, and then we can go from there. Another part to figure out is the whole issue of parking along that street. There is, there's, you pull off, and that's about all you got. So, that's something that, as we fix this issue or address this issue, we've gotta deal with that issue.
My name is John Broderick, and I live at 188 Windjammer, and I was wondering, how much are the estimated fees for the forensic audit? What will be the end results expected, and were these fees included in the latest budget?
Yeah, we set aside $226,000 for it. It's done on an hourly basis, which all forensic audits are, because no one knows how long it's gonna take, and the expected outcome, we don't know. That's the whole idea of doing the audit. Find out if there's problems and proceed, follow the money, and that's exactly what 'll happen.
Hi, Marty Clark, 850-5 Ocean Parkway. You make this real difficult, I ain't the podium, I'm old. Yeah, right. This makes me feel more potent. First, I wanna thank the Board for helping facilitate this open conversation, which is nice. I wanna especially thank Esther Diller, the new President of STOP, for her group, and I'd like to thank all the neighbors and STOP members and people that came out and showed support for this tonight, and the Board Directors, I know you got a tough... No, I'm just gonna sit here and talk for about 15 minutes until you get really mad, okay? Maybe you could get Doug and Ted to scold me for a few minutes. I've been a member of this association for over 40 years. Two things have changed that really have bothered me. One, my dues went from $50 to $980, and the other thing that bothers me a little bit is our private and exclusive amenities, at least they were until 2011, are now open to the public. You know, our amenities are paid for by the association members' money. We spent half a million dollars on a new boat ramp, and everybody in the county thinks it's beautiful. They don't pay for it, we do. My question is, why did this happen? Our charter and our declaration, which is the documents that tell us how to do business, tell you how to do business, or tell you how to do business, say, and I'm gonna read you the, right out of it, "The general purpose of the association is to further promote community welfare of the, quote, property owners." The words "general public" don't show up in our documents, so why are we now open to the public? Thank you, and thanks for the job you guys do, really. And I got to thank...
Marty, that's a, that's a good question. You know, most of us are familiar with a couple of terms that are frequently used interchangeably, tax-exempt and nonprofit, but they're really different. Nonprofit is typically used to describe a corporate status. Tax-exempt is something that you obtain from an IRS by satisfying certain conditions. In order to get a tax-exempt status for Ocean Pines, 501(c)(4), we have to meet certain requirements imposed by IRS, including that our community common assets have to be accessible to the public. I'll be happy to send you the IRS document that, that, that state... No, really, no. So, 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 so to finalize with my individual comment on this, really, if the community wants to change this, we have to change the tax-exempt status, and it's really not an easy process. It's one of the hardest status to obtain by IRS and one of the most difficult to change. But, in essence, what we are doing is exactly what the IRS expects us to do, and you all remember, a few years ago, when we had issue with the revenue from a beach parking, and we did not provide public access to our parking, we were fined a very, very large sum of money, I believe it was $400,000 plus, and as a result of that, we basically made a decision to allow public access to our beach parking. That further validates the issue that we have in terms of our common assets. They all have to be accessible to the public. Now, to Marty's point, when we, when he talks about the boat ramp, IRS tells us that our common assets have to be accessible to the public, but it doesn't, they don't tell us, they don't mandate that they have to be free, okay? So, I think this is where we, as a, as a community, and we as a Board, and we as a management of the association, really need to take a look at this, just like we charge public to use our pools, okay? Perhaps we should be looking at charging public to use a boat ramp. It's a something, it's a work in progress and something that will need to be addressed, and it's something that the Board is actually working on with help from committees, soliciting their input, and this is where we are, so please bear with us, give us more time. We're doing our best.
Hi, I'm Joe Fold, I live at 46 Beacon Hill Road. Regarding the forensic audit, has the planning meeting with Gross Mendelson Associates been completed, and could the Board comment on who specifically they will be reporting to, what type of interim reporting will be required, and do you plan on sharing this information with the homeowners?
So, the entrance interview is gonna be conducted on, on Friday, all right? So, these guys are the professionals, you know, in that regard. They're gonna give us the advice on how the structure of their final, or their forensic audit is gonna take. I think it's very important to state, the Board, at least from my, and I'll speak, I think we're supposed to say, as individual directors, that, you know, we are hands-off. That is the best way to approach it. I fully expect them to tell us, "We don't need your help, we will let you know when we need you," okay? And that's the approach I personally take, and that's the one I'm gonna endorse from everybody, because what it does is, it just removes us from any involvement in any of that, okay? You know, I have a tough time understanding, or at least personally understanding, how we would wanna micromanage that process. They're the professionals, we're paying them for it, we expect them to, you know, engage in, at a professional level. Now, whether or not they find something, well, that remains to be seen, okay? Now, they will also, and this is where I will defer to the more legal minds, is I don't know what they are allowed to report while the forensic audit is in progress. I just don't know. We could certainly ask them, you know, what's appropriate? Do you get to a certain point and then release a, you know, a status report that can be, you know, digested by the public? I don't know, but I suspect most of those kinds of things will be answered when we have this entrance interview with them to get the process started.
Donna Lovell, 158 Ocean Parkway. I'd like to know, I understand there's a lot of delinquent association dues, I'd like to find out what we as an association are doing to collect these.
So, if you recall, we originally were thinking about having a report on collections at this meeting, and then after thinking about it some more, we really said, you know, we don't want the, the town hall meeting to take on the tone of a Board meeting, because it's, it's meant for this open dialogue. So, we've got a, a current report from Lurch Early and Brewer, who has been doing collections on our behalf, all right? We are going to prepare the latest report on their efforts for collection at the, the April 28th Board Meeting. So, you'll get an updated report on the status of, of our collections to date. Yeah, the things that have been collected. They, they give us that information because they are actively involved in that, okay? So, we have, we'll have an update on that at April.
Hi, my name is Esther, Nine Witches Watch. First, I wanna thank Doug and the Board for putting this meeting together with us. I think it's important to have transparency in the, in the community, which is what I'm trying to accomplish. I do have a question. So far tonight, the Met Word presentation was great, I think everybody has a positive feeling about it. That being said, at the last Board meeting, six of the seven Board members voted against Director Herrick's motion for an RFP to outsource HOA management and software, another part of our community that needs to be addressed. How could we be, how could the majority of the Board be against a competitive pricing solution for what's an obvious issue in our management, all the theft and the way it's been handled, et cetera? We had a competitive bid at $159,000 a year, which included software and staffing presented last summer, yeah, last summer, I'm sorry. So, we know we have viable option. That being said, I'd like to know why.
Well, outsourcing may at some point in time be an option. I think where we are as an organization today, with a new General Manager, a new Director of Finance who has more credential, is a more, a senior sophisticated Director of Finance than we've had in the past, a new employee in the Finance Department, changes for, plans for changes in the structure of that department, I think to stop in that process and move to, "Oh, well, we're gonna see about this right now," even though we have hired all these, the, the new staff here, I don't think would serve the community well right now. I think we're in a point to develop a, a good, a very, very strong, very strong financial department to take us forward. So, timing, maybe another time that would've been the right, the right thing to do, but I don't think that's the right thing, and I don't think the Board thinks that's the right thing, the majority of the Board thinks that's the right thing for Ocean Pines today, given our current situation.
That is, that is a very good question. I know it's one of the things that are concerned. If you recall the discussion at the Board meeting... If you recall the discussion at the board meeting, we talked about getting an RFI. And again, I'll speak personally. An RFP means we already know what the problem is, we already have done the analysis, we already know what the solution is going to be. Now we're soliciting to companies to come in and implement that solution. I think conceptually, we know that there might be, you know, some issues, and we should be thinking about that. So hence, the discussion on the RFI. Let's get out there and have companies say, hey, we have this concern. We've got an in-sourced finance department. We've got some concerns from a staffing, from a credibility, from an experience perspective. We want to look at the potential of using a management firm or some other outsourced third-party environment in order to run our operation, okay? So that means we want information, all right? So, we talked about it in the last board meeting. We said, "Let's look at an RFI and see what it does with it." So, your point's taken, Esther. I think we can't sit on it for another five years. Like, yeah, we can't sit on it. So the idea is, maybe this is a good sort of reminder for us as the board to say, hey, let's get, we talked about it, let's go ahead and do the RFI and see where it leads us, okay? Because I think, again, just saying RFP to put this in is a little bit presumptuous. So we'll be smarter after we get that RFI, all right?
Joe Salafia from 406 Ocean Parkway.
Can I just answer that, please? Tom Herrick, I'm on the Board of Directors. I just want to give some insight to that because I'm the one that put out the motion to bring in an RFP. To say that we have problems conceptually, I think is a complete understatement. We've known for a long, long time, and these issues have been documented, that we have very poor procedures in our accounting department. We've had a couple criminal investigations in the past year. We've had five people resign from the accounting department. Conceptually, no, I'm sorry, I don't believe that. And I'm very strong about this, and I'm disappointed that the board does not understand what dire condition our finance department is in and has been for a long time. We get an audited report annually, and management always comes up and gives a presentation at the board meeting, "We're doing this, we're doing this, we're doing this." But nothing, we have no oversight. The oversight is terrible. It was so bad that we tried to bring in, and we had John Fiola, who was the finance director at the time, Dave Stevens, Brett Hill, understood the problems, the losses that we were occurring. And they said, "You know what? We don't have time for an RFP. We need to bring in people right now. We have a huge problem here." And there was a presentation to be at the board back in July of last summer that it was so bad, and the board didn't even want to hear it. It was in the board packet, and it was just dismissed that, no, we're not even going to go there. And subsequently, we had a criminal investigation in the back room. Twenty-seven bank deposits that couldn't be reconciled. We brought in an outside agency to do an investigation. And part of their reasoning why nothing's happened is because they cite poor accounting procedures in Ocean Pines. So, you know, we have problems. We have police departments doing investigations, multiple suspects, and we can't even pin it down because of poor accounting practices. This is what we're up against here. And, you know, I mean, I'm asking, it was dismissed by the board in July. I said, "Look, we have problems here. At least, this is another venue." And, you know, the local papers reported as a software package. No, that's not what I'm asking for. I'm asking for the software that comes with it. The most important thing that we don't have is the oversight. The oversight to make sure we're doing things properly here. And I still don't have the confidence that we are. And all I'm asking for is another option, another avenue to pursue, to compare it to what is going on with the tech work group is just bringing in software, and then having the confidence that our own people are going to have the oversight, which we haven't had for years. So I don't understand what makes you think that we're going to be able to do this on our own. This is a specific companies that would come in here professionally and independently, observe what we're doing. We're having employees watching employees. And it's not working. And I think we need to bring in somebody professional to look at the overall option and work with the people that we have. We're not looking to get rid of, make Steve's position go. We have, he's excellent in what he does. I have full confidence in that, but he needs assistance. And I don't really feel that when you have employees looking at employees, we're actually going to attain the goal of taking care of our assessment dollars and making sure they're appropriated, you know, properly. So thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Tom. I think you hit a nail on the head. Joe Salafia, 406 Ocean Parkway. I'm a former fraud auditor for the Attorney General's Office. I have a colleague here, a former auditor from the OIG's office. And I'm telling you, the soup and the rest of the finance department, excluding the new folks, have been very naive and think that we don't have an endemic problem of misappropriation of funds, of fraud and embezzlement. It goes back years. I remember, I guess eight years or 10 years ago, when somebody in the golf club was ordering automobile parts and souping up one of their cars. And it just goes on and on and on. And it's not a new problem, and all these dollars that were lost weren't lost over this past year. They've been endemic throughout the years. And I'm just thankful that this fraud audit, or this forensic audit, is about to take place. I just can't believe that our former annual auditors did not disclose or uncover anything that was going on. I think they were kind of like lax and probably taking the direction of Art Carmin and the rest of the finance department on what to look at and how to report. So I'm just appreciative for the forensic audit.
I know. We really do need to stick to direct questions and try to make them concise rather than coming to the mic and just making a lot of opinion. There's a lot of folks here who have other questions that really need, we need to be fair to everyone. And the purpose is for direct questions tonight.
I'm Larry Perron, 19 Clipper Court. And I'd like an explanation from the board as to why the board entered into a three-year employment contract with the former budget, or the former food and beverage manager, excuse me. And then as a result of his release in January, the association incurred the balance of that contract of $140,000 plus the additional interest, or the additional benefit cost. I want to know when that was approved by the board and why we would enter into a three-year contract with a food and beverage manager.
First of all, just as a matter of background, and I'm going to repeat what Ralph DeAngelis said, honesty and transparency. And that's what we are trying to do here tonight for the remainder of the evening. As a matter of record, I want to state that the board was not aware of this contract at all, nor was the board asked to approve the contract. We learned about the contract by pure third-party information. It was brought to the attention. And as soon as we found out about it, we took actions. And obviously, anybody that's familiar with law and contracts, you know, you have to honor the terms and conditions of the contract. And that's basically what we had to deal with. Some terms that were extended to that employee contract were actually against the employee handbook, which is what governs every employee of the association for any benefits, entitlements, et cetera, which created basically a hundred-plus-thousand-dollar cost to the association. But we, the contract was signed by then-acting general manager. But I want to go on the record to let the community know that the board was not aware of this contract at all till, obviously, it was too late to do anything about it. And after seeking legal counsel's opinion, we basically dealt with the issue in the way that was necessary in order not to allow such contract to remain as part of the association's obligation. It's a liability that the association was basically a party to that contract. And if you look at our, basically, bylaws or governing documents, they clearly state, in the situations where association is party to a contract, the required authorization has to come from the president or the vice president, and it has to be attested by the secretary or the assistant secretary. That did not occur. It's a lesson learned, costly lesson, but just for the record, the board was not aware of the contract. Thank you. Nor did the board approve it.
I'm Nancy Weber, and I've been property owner in Ocean Pines since 1969. And I'm just stunned at the way... I just never thought it would come to this. I can't believe it. Anyway, I want to know about the fertilizer. We have all this fertilizer, and then we go buy more fertilizer. What is going on with the fertilizer? Are they going to sell the fertilizer under the table or something? I mean, it seems really, really weird.
The one good thing about the fertilizer, unlike alcohol, it doesn't have expiration date or the other things that we had to throw away. We obviously had a change from when we went from Casper and then Landscapes Unlimited. Landscapes, we inherited a lot of inventory from them. And our current superintendent has a different approach to that. A lot of it, sometimes it deals with weather as well. I don't think that's inventory that's going to go away. We can utilize that. It will just be done over a period of time. So we do have excess inventory currently in there on the golfing site.
Good evening. My name's Donna McElroy. I live at Six Whitesale Circle. Real simple question, am I going to have to live the rest of my life with MediaCom?
Maybe this is the last question of the night. That's a great question. So there's a couple of things in play right now. Because we are, we're currently in negotiation with MediaCom, all right? So, let me finish. We were, and I've got to be careful because we were talking about what we can say and what we can't say right now. Several months, no, yeah, several months ago, we were actually approached by Comcast. They came to us unsolicited and wanted to know if, you know, what it would take to come in and put the services into Ocean Pines. And if you notice, they actually sent, they called it a walk-through crew, and they went through and did whatever it is that they do, take measurements, look at linear feet, blah, blah, blah. They came back and said, "We don't think we can do it. There's not enough of a take rate in the environment for us to do that," all right? And then we countered with, well, what happens if you were able to buy out the infrastructure for MediaCom? You know, would that change, you know, the dynamics and the business model? And they took it back to corporate, and they came back and said, "No." Now, just the fact that I said this, and we're in contract negotiations with MediaCom, we have now sort of weakened our position a little bit, haven't we? That's the problem, all right? Because when we're negotiating, there's two things that are in play here. When the original contract was put together back in '79 and was amended in '98, they had something called exclusive use of the right-of-way, okay? They paid a 3% franchise fee, but there was a level of exclusivity. Now, in this day and age, you can no longer have exclusive use of the rights-of-way, all right? They are a shared environment, okay? No, that's, yeah, but we're talking about the right-of-way here, okay? So where we go with that is, now that the requirement of not having an exclusive use of the right-of-way, now we have an opportunity to potentially bring in other carriers, okay? Now here's where we've got an open discussion going on with the potential creation of an RFP to have other carriers look at the right-of-way and potentially provide services. It's still in discussion phase, okay? And at the same time, in order to have a level of continuity, because unfortunately, we can't just say, "Hey, MediaCom, we don't like you anymore. See you later." I think there were people that would just say, "That's a bad business decision because I still use, as maybe as terrible as it is, I still use the MediaCom connection for my internet and working at home." So the idea is, we looked at, and oh, by the way, Verizon as well. We actually reached out to Verizon, and they said, "No, no way. We're not coming in here." They're no longer doing Fios and so on and so forth. So anyway, I know it's a little bit of a nebulous answer, all right? But I can say that the Comcast thing happened, and it won't happen, all right? Now, I can add one more thing, and this is really, this is really going to put us in a bad shape, but I think I owe it to everybody. One of the things that Comcast came back with and said, "The only way we would consider it is if you did bulk services," okay? And bulk services says, "I'm going to charge everybody in Ocean Pines, all 8,452 homes, a basic rate, okay? You don't get to choose. You get it, you get it shoved down your throat." And of course, what happens then? The assessment goes up, all right? And I can guarantee you, knowing the makeup of our community, where you've got people that are there part-time, nobody's interested in having to swallow the expense of Comcast, you know, for the time they're not there. How many people have talked to MediaCom about these seasonal packages, you know? So I think it was a fairly easy decision on us to say, "I don't think the association would have the appetite to have the bulk services, you know, as part of the package." So that was the last thing, to sort of, we said Comcast, thank you very much. It looks like it's not going to go any further. So that's where we are right now. More to come on that because we will be talking additionally to MediaCom and also the creation of an RFP, which I'm not at liberty to give you all the details on that, but that's also happening as well. I don't know anything about that. The only thing that we heard, I think JB, you heard it from the guy. It was, they were, they, as far as their extreme service, they took it upon themselves with no involvement to Ocean Pines, no cost to Ocean Pines, they started to replace their infrastructure. You know, they just showed up one day, and they're starting to replace it. We're like, mm, okay. You know, we had some questions. And if I leave anything out, was there anything else that they said? Basically, we're just doing it, you know, to replace some of the core things. So that's as much as I know right now.
Tom Janusak, 17, Lookout Point. Since we're on IT, I know we have another $260,000 in iPads, laptops, and all kinds of stuff we bought last year. Is there some point in time that we're going to be able to get Wi-Fi in some of our facilities, like here in the admin building? How about at the yacht club, where a lot of young people would probably come if they could actually get on and not talk to each other? It would be great. But they still buy drinks. That's a cool thing. That's what they do. At the country club as well. We don't, as long as they're drinking, I don't care if they're talking to each other. It's much quieter, especially now without the pirate ship. Thank you. Thanks for locating that so I could see it every time I drive by on Ocean Parkway. I bow to you. I know, that pirate ship was fine just because people couldn't brush the damn blue stones out of the way. It wasn't my fault.
Okay. That last question will bring the end of our Q and A for tonight. It was nice to see so many people come out. Wonderful for the board to make this opportunity available. And I know that this is something they'd like to do again. So, thank you all.